I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Finacy.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor Mazzolio.
Yes.
Counselor Finsland.
Here.
Counselor Herrick.
Here.
Counselor McKenzie.
Here.
And Counselor Galbeck.
Here.
And Counselor Cadot.
Here.
Have a quorum present. Item number four is approval of minutes from the October 1st, 2013 regular council meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor say aye for approving the minutes.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign. Motion carries, passes, so the approval passes.
Item 5.1 is a public hearing, a resolution by the Public Works Director, or Public Works Department, authorizing the following alleys to be blacktopped within the city of Superior. Alley number one, Garfield and Logan Avenues, North 20th to Garfield-Logan intersection. Alley number two, the public hearing is being rescheduled for the November 5th meeting due to a typo. Alley number three, Wisconsin and New York Avenues and North 18th and 19th Streets. Alley number four, Lamborn and Weeks Avenue and North 58th and 59th Streets. Alley number five, El Myra and Washington Avenues, North 16th to North 17th Streets. And alley number six, Cypress to Birch Avenues, North 12th to North 13th Street. Yep, yep.
Okay, so at this time we'll declare the public hearing.
Turn your mic off.
Oops. Start that over again. We'll declare the public hearing open at this time in reference to 5.1. And at this time I'll ask if there's anyone wishing to speak for or against public hearing 5.1. For the second time, anyone willing to speak for, wishing to speak for or against 5.1? And for the third and last time, anyone wishing to speak for or against 5.1? So hearing none? What would be the play, um, do we have to move to close the public hearing on this one?
No, just a motion to.
Okay. Looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to closing, opposing the public hearing, say, answer by the same sign? Okay, if not, I need to ask for their.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, and I would now entertain a motion to adopt 5.1.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And if there's no further comment on this, all in favor of adopting 5.1, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign? So 5.1 passes.
Item 5.2 is a resolution to approve the Community Development Block Grant 2014 Action Plan, authorizing staff to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So at this time I would declare this public hearing open and ask at this time if there's anyone wishing to speak for or against 5.2? And if, if so, you're welcome to come, well, I guess they're walking out. I was gonna say, you're welcome to come up to the microphone. Second, second time asking the same thing, anyone wishing to speak for or against 5.2? And for the third time, asking if there's anyone wishing to speak for or against 5.2? Okay, so this time the public hearing will be closed and would entertain a motion to pass 5.2.
So moved.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, 5.2. Any comment by the council? If not, all in favor of 5.2, say aye?
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
Item 5.3 is the, is a public hearing for the 2014 General Fund Operating Budget. Finance Director Vito is requesting an increase of Sydney levy by $70,000, increasing to $11,752,248 for the 2014 and allocating this to the contingency line item in the budget.
Okay, Jean, would you like to say something first?
Sure. Thanks Counselor Bender. After some late afternoon emails with Mayor Hagan and Council President Bender, we've decided to pull this part of the budget request, so it will just be the budget that you adopted on August 20th, up for consideration.
Okay. So do we need any action on this then? Since it's been pulled? Okay. So no action necessary.
But the, but the hearing for the general operating budget is still in play.
You have to do.
Oh, okay. I guess the hearing is still in place, so can I, do I still have to ask three times? Okay. So since, since the hearing for item number 5.3 is still in place, I will ask the same question three times. First of all, is there anyone wishing to speak either for or against 5.3? Second time, anyone wishing to speak for or against 5.3? And for the third and final time, anyone wishing to speak for or against 5.3? And hearing none, so that hearing is closed.
Do we need a motion to approve that, the budget?
Well, didn't, didn't we already approve the budget?
Yeah, you already did. I don't think there's ever been a, like a separate motion after the public hearing is closed. Okay. So, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Item six is a consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and approved, or moved and seconded. All in, all in favor of approving, say aye?
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign? So the consent agenda passes.
Item seven is business by department heads. Item 7.1, I am recommending approval of the electronic tablet project as outlined in my communication included in your agenda packet.
Move, move, second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Counselor McKenzie?
Just a couple of questions and comments. The city cost on these, I've heard different figures, is it, is it 10,000 or is it 11,000?
She's looking.
I think the, the estimate that we were able to probably guesstimate is about $7,800 with the iPad 3s and the case and the optional keyboard.
Okay, I said, one time I'd heard something like nine or 10, so was there a negotiated, a different negotiated price or something? No?
No.
So the county, the same, where they got the same, same price, so they were, so they're what, 15,000?
Um, yeah, I don't think I have the county information with me, but they, yeah, they were higher, of course, because they ordered several more, because they had more board members. I'm not quite sure what theirs was, I think they ordered like 24 of them, if I'm.
Yeah, well, I, I, you know, my comment is, is I think that, that these are kind of an expensive item, and I, I think it's an expensive experiment. It may save some money, I, maybe, maybe a little bit, not sure. My suggestion to the committee, although that went over like a lead balloon, was to maybe that we should, if we're in favor of, of iPads, that we should maybe pay for some of them upfront. And then you could always, you know, sell them back to the, to the, to the city at some point if you ever left. I think by, by owning, by paying for, for some of it, I think that gives everybody, or the owner at least, or the user, you know, a better sense of ownership and responsibility. Because I guess my next question is, what happens if these things are lost, stolen, or damaged?
Well, I think the committee believed that they were lost or sold and they would be treated as any other city property. If your laptop is stolen, we issue laptops right now, and if it was stolen from your home, it would probably be covered under your homeowner's insurance. The policy itself is still kind of a work in progress. We wanted to get your approval first of all and see how it went with the training and everything, and then work on the policy as it developed, any personal use and that type of thing. We're kind of following the county's lead on this.
Okay, all right, thanks. Well, as, as it's written, or as it stands, I, I'm, I'm not in favor, but, but, thanks, thanks for the information.
Just so you know, the county clerk and I have scheduled some training for the iPads, and it's very beginner training on, with the Douglas, with the UW Extension Office on November 6th. There'll be two trainings during that day, and I'll get you the times once we have that confirmed.
Okay, um, should we maybe have Dan speak about the budget for this and where the money comes from? Would you be willing to speak, Dan? Enter and sign in, please.
Dan Che, IS manager, and these iPads would fall under the same budget that we currently have for laptops, for the counselors. Right now, we have laptops that we've issued to most of the counselors, some of them use them, some have given them back, they might have their own and so forth. And I think some counselors might have their own iPad as well. But this would come out of the IS budget, and we budget to replace them every four years or so, between four and five years, is what we try to do with equipment like this.
Did any, Counselor Finacy, did you have a question about this?
Well, not a question, I, just a comment, and, you know, as, as one of the early adopters of this, I just want to stress the, I think it's the right thing to do, you know, from a couple of different standpoints. One is, is the savings on the paper and the labor and the postage of mailing out everything. I think the beauty of this that, that we're gonna find is, one, is we're gonna be in line with the county, so we're gonna be able to share resources, very good. But I think the other thing is, is what I really like is we get instant documentation. You know, we're not waiting for a packet to be, you know, mailed to us, or letters, or having to stop by. It's instant, and so I think just the benefits, the long-term benefits and the cost saving is gonna be great for the council.
Thank you.
Counselor McKenzie, just, I did find the county costs, their total cost was just over 14,000 for 24 of them.
Counselor Sweeney, I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't, because where I'm sitting, I couldn't see the red light in the microphone, that's why, I usually put mine up like that, so everybody can see it, but just a suggestion.
Thank you for the suggestion. Uh, Dan, I have a question. What is the useful life gonna be of these? How many years would you say the useful life would be?
Well, as I said, we're gonna shoot for about four years, five years, by then there'll be new iPads, new technology, but we could, we could get that out of them, no problem. Especially for what we're doing, and if I could just talk to Counselor McKenzie about the breakage and so far, we are, I think we decided in committee that we will give the warranty on it. I think that covers two breaks, and we haven't purchased any yet, so I don't have the exact details, but I think we're gonna go ahead to take care of that.
Okay. Counselor Finsland?
As the most reluctant of the committee members to adopt this policy, I'm finding myself in kind of an odd position. I've been reticent and, it's hard for me to take on new, new things, but I'm finding, I don't, I still don't love the thing, as I'm told I would, the romance just isn't there. But I am finding it useful, and I'm going to experience a chance to take it with me on a trip, and I, I'm looking forward to that and trying to see what other uses I can. I think what I will find, and I'm expecting to find, is that it will be a useful thing, just a way to stay in touch with the city and with other family members, et cetera, but also to maybe make hotel reservations as I'm traveling and other things. And I appreciate the city letting me borrow it for that purpose. I think we will, all those of us that get these will find a personal use for them and probably end up wanting to buy them from the city, should we leave the council for whatever reason. So I'm finding myself in favor of it, and in a way sort of reluctant, but I'm, I'm finding it a worthwhile experience, and I'm, I'm glad I'm learning how to do it, and I appreciate all of Terry's help.
Well, just following up on what Counselor Finsland, Finsland said, when I was a Rotary Ambassador last March and April to Bolivia, somebody else on, in the group, had their iPad that they brought along, and they were very, it was very easy for them since, even in Bolivia, all of the hotels had Wi-Fi, it was very easy for them to be able to communicate, answer emails and things like that, and I was stuck going to the lobby of whichever hotel we were in and using the computer there, which, you know, wasn't, wasn't as easy or always as user-friendly. Then the other thing, from an education background, for years, Apple format have, have been the standard of use, even though some school districts have gotten kind of away from that, but, and the reason that, that Apple was, is because it was easier to use. And even though Counselor Finsland might not think that, but that, that, that's what has had been proven as far as education went, and the Apple format as opposed to the Windows format, so. Anyone else have a comment on this? Okay, if not, I guess we're ready for the question, so all in favor of 7.1, say aye?
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, so, at least two. Okay, so, so, the motion does pass.
Item 7.2, Assistant Finance Directors, the Huskies submitting the 2014 library budget.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this? Seeing no lights coming on, all in favor of 7.2, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
Item 7.3, Human Resources Administrator Kinesny is requesting confirmation of Diane Nelson to the Environmental Services Stormwater and Administrative Services Manager Position at Wage Step 5, Chris Carlson to the Environmental Services Collection System Engineering and Operations Manager Position at Wage Step 7, and John Jamal to the Environmental Services Wastewater Engineering and Operations Manager Position at Wage Step 7.
Anyone wishing to speak on this? Seeing no lights? All in favor of, of the three appointments under 7.3, please say aye?
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
Item 7.4, Environmental Services Director Roberts is recommending to award, the award for the wastewater facilities planning to Donahue and Associates for $124,240 for 2013 and projected cost of $153,785 for services in 2014.
What does the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval.
I was gonna say, it needs a second to go any further. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, any questions? Because I have one that I wrote down here, and on the iPad, now I'm not finding it, but it was here, it was here earlier. And my, my question is for Steve anyway, so Steve, if you want to come up here. And that's the budgetary source for this? And explaining which year, or which years, rather? And I know that was my question, and maybe, maybe I hit the wrong thing on here.
Sure, the way we have this split out over the two years is because we didn't budget enough money in 2013 to carry out the full, the full contract, knowing that we wouldn't get started at the beginning of the year, they would have to carry over into the second, into the second year, so into 2014. So it's split between the two years, and I think the total is about $278,025 over those two years. We wouldn't feasibly be able to complete that work this year as well, so not only is it not budgeted, but there's not enough calendar year to complete that work.
And again, where is this money coming from?
It's from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund.
Okay. That, I remember reading that, and, and I could swear I'd written that here, but it's not, it's not there, but that's neither here nor there. Any other questions that you would have of Steve? Counselor Herrick? It is hard to see those, now I know why the mayor could never see you.
Yeah, just a question, Steve, any of these items that, that we have hired out these people to oversee, is there any of them that the department could do themselves? Or, I mean, are we qualified to do any of this ourselves?
This is a pretty substantive effort, and we will be doing a lot of this, a lot of the work internally, so it's gonna be a collaborative effort. We actually spent probably over a month negotiating with Donahue and Associates in terms of the scope, carving out pieces that we would do and carving out pieces that we would rely on their staff and their expertise to perform. So we are doing some of the work, but it's not gonna offset the costs that are presented here.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Sweeney?
Is this the only people you were negotiating with, or is there any?
What we did was, we undertook a process called qualification-based selection, where what we did was advertise for a full month, beginning in May, and then opening later in June, and we received statements of qualifications from three different firms, and then what we did after reviewing those qualifications was interview all three. As I mentioned, negotiating the scope, took over a month with just one firm, and so it's not really practical in a study of this sort to have a competitive cost scope now prepared by either, any of the firms in comparison to one another.
I'm not suggesting a price, but I just want to know if there's more than one than there was.
Yeah, there were, there was Strand and Associates, SEH, and Donahue and Associates, one of the three.
Okay. Counselor Olson?
Steve, I see Donahue and Associates quite a few times during the year, and when we're looking at approving something in, on the 15th of October of 2013, is this a continuation of something else through the year?
Not directly. They have done quite a bit of work for us in the past, and most similar to this would have been a series of projects contemplated under, was the Headworks, it's a wet weather optimization series of projects, and there's a lot of overlap between the two. They had done a lot of modeling of our facility and, and some evaluation of individual unit processes, so there is a lot of efficiency in continuing with that firm that wasn't something we wanted to use to exclude other firms. We've also worked with Strand, we've done a lot of work with SEH, and we advertised in order to get competition. So it isn't a direct contract in series, but because of the other work they've done with us, there is certainly some overlap.
So can you tell me how much we've spent this calendar year on consultants, or whatever, however you want to define, Donahue and Associates?
Sure. Within our operating budgets, we, I think we had about $210,000 budgeted, and we've probably got about 50 or so, or 80, I think about 80,000 left to spend in terms of where we were budgeted, so I think that would leave us at about $160,000 spent year to date.
So you just missed me now because you're telling me that we don't have enough budget, budgeted for 2013, but we got 60,000 left?
There's, there's a whole series of accounts that are associated with the professional services, the specific line item for engineering services is, is going to be overspent at the end of the year. Within the totality of the budget, we're still under budget for the year, and I think we'll also be under budget within the professional services accounts.
So when we do these projects, we've got a budget to do the projects? And we don't have enough budget to do the engineering for the project?
It depends on the project. A lot of times when we're doing specific construction projects, they'll actually, actually be budgeted within the capital improvements. This contract doesn't fit within those type of improvements.
So we're robbing Peter to pay Paul?
Where we have saved money and where we have taken in more revenue than we projected, we do have funding available outside of the context of the specific line item for that series of accounts. It's not robbing from anywhere, we do have funding available.
Oh, that's a phrase, there's no accusation there. I just, you know, we, it seems like every turn, time we turn around, and no fault of anybody's, and, you know, you included, but we fought with ESD for years in the fact that that place was made into a fortress, and we had somebody from WLSSD come in, look at streamlining, everything, but at the end of the day, I'm still seeing engineering costs.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great reference. Actually, in Kurt Soderbergh's report, one of the things that he suggested is that we undertook a comprehensive facilities planning project in order to do exactly the type of things that we're proposing here.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McKenzie?
I just have to ask this question, is, is any way that this is gonna affect the rates that were just raised?
This won't affect the rates that were just raised. In the, in the 2013 packet that we brought forward, I think we'd allocated 105,000 or 125,000 last year anticipating the expenses for this year, and we will budget from within our existing, what we have as approved rates for 2014, so there would not be any additional rate, rate increase associated with this.
So no, okay, so no additional rate increase to the one that was just done?
No, this is, this is, this will, we'll be able to, to afford this within the rates that were passed.
Guaranteed.
Guaranteed.
All right, thanks.
Anything else for the good of the group? And Steve, just so you'll, you'll not think that I'm completely mad, this document was sent late to us, so it wasn't in the exact same spot in the packet, and I do have, I have it written here, already budgeted, i.e. no tax increase or fee for you to be able to speak to where this had come from, that it does come from the enterprise fund, so I did find it.
Yeah, Counselor, Counselor Herrick was good enough to point out to us that the, that the center page had been missing.
Yes, right, and.
And so, in an effort to save paper, we had printed double side before we sent it along, and when it got scanned, they missed the center page.
And that would explain it, so, well, thanks, thanks, Steve. If there are no other questions, let's move on. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
Item 7.5, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to award the contract for 1709 Winter Street demolition and repairs to the lowest, most qualified respondent, RJS Construction, in the amount of $143,700.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Anyone have a, Counselor Herrick is first, Counselor Olson is second, as far as comments or questions, and I, I also have one if it doesn't get brought up.
Jeff, just a quick question for you. Reading the background, they talk about the cost to be levied as a special assessment upon the property. I'm sure the property's not gonna sell for $143,000, so what, what's the value of the property after it's all said and done?
Counselor, that's a great question. I, I don't have the value of the properties that sits, I guess, on the, on the top of my head right now, but you're right, that, that dollar amount probably is not recoverable in the long term. The property will sell at some point when it goes tax forfeit for something less than that amount. That's kind of one of the unfortunate ramifications of us going through this raisin repair process. In some cases, we don't, we're not able to recover that, but still, for the public good, take that.
Sure, sure.
Building out of the way, yeah.
All right, thank you. Brad, did you wish to say something? I saw you grabbing for the mic.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Counselor Olson was next, and then Counselor McKenzie?
Jeff, have we given every possible protection to the Spirit Motorcycle Shop? When there's one wall in there that I guess is, the integrity of it is, could be a freestanding wall?
Yeah, actually, the, there's a, been a plan, a plan done and designed by a professional engineer as far as taking this building out of the way, because you're right, on both sides of the building, there's a, an adjoining wall on the motorcycle shop and on Shooter's Supply. So there's some work included in the product, that's, and that's why it starts to drive the price up a little bit. There's work to stabilize those walls where they tie together, moving some electrical connections from one to the other. There's a, some drain tile and some pumps going in the two adjoining buildings so that they can take stormwater after the building's gone and, and get rid of that. So, yeah, and then re-siding, re-sheeding those to protect them from the elements after that.
Thank you. Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, Jeff, when I saw this, I mean, 143, 144,000, it's like, wow, this must be a lot bigger building than I thought it was. No?
No, it's not a very big building at all.
You're right, sometimes they're deceiving on the, on the outside, but.
Yeah, but for a lot of the reasons I just mentioned, to Counselor Olson's question, that's what's driving the cost of this up. It's, it's a difficult removal, I mean, it's, or more difficult than a freestanding single-family home or something.
Yeah, 'cause that's, that, that cost is about, what, 10 grand nowadays for a single-family home?
For disposal and stuff, yeah.
Well, all right.
Yeah, so there's, it's fairly involved, and like I said, we did have a plan developed, but the contractors bid on, and it does outline all those details, so.
Where, where does all the demolition material go?
It's a great question, I'm not sure where RJS is, has picked it to go.
I hope not out to Lantio.
No, I won't be at ours, I can tell you that, yeah.
WLSSD, and then where does it go? Okay, my one correction, my one addition is under number two background on this, and the, in the middle of the third sentence, the order was obtained, ED, and here it just says was obtained, so that would be the only grammar correction that I would make on this. So Counselor McKenzie, did you wish to say something else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So therefore, all in favor of 7.5, say aye? Anyone oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
Item 7.6 was the amended agenda that went out. Fire Chief Panger is recommending to award bid for fire hall number two window replacement to Duluth Glass and Mirror in the amount of $23,885.
Second.
Anyone have a question on this? Because I do, but Counselor McKenzie's first.
Yeah, and it was awarded to Duluth Glass Mirror, right? Yes?
Yes.
Why not, why not, why not Fentec?
Duluth Glass was the lowest qualified bid. I went and looked at the windows from each Fentec Duluth Glass and Superior Glass, and the bid called for a minimum of aluminum, extruded aluminum for the sash, and those were vinyl, so they were excluded from the bid.
Fentec was vinyl? They don't have extruded aluminum?
The window he showed me that was for the bid was vinyl.
Huh. I thought for sure that they, I thought, I saw a place where they did some work, Fentec did work, and they had the aluminum and plastic.
They may do aluminum windows, but that's not what was showed me, so that wasn't the bid, so.
Well, they didn't, so they didn't, they didn't provide that for you?
And the other ones, you know, all the other ones were aluminum.
Okay, so they didn't let you know that they had the same, they weren't going to be bidding the same apples for apples?
I can't explain. I didn't ask them why they didn't, why they were all vinyl. I just, they showed me the window they had, and it wasn't the right window.
And why do these specifically have to be the aluminum?
That was what the bid called for. We wanted something that had extended life, that would last. I think we're pretty confident that these, the windows that we're going to be putting in there are going to last for, they're going to be in there for a long time. They're guaranteed for 20 years on the sash and the windows, and they're triple glazed. They're going to be very energy efficient, so.
Yeah, and that's important. I just ask because it's, you know, 4,000, 4,000-plus difference in the estimates, so.
Well, and Counselor McKenzie, to answer your question, I know where you've seen them that are aluminum clad. They're at the Douglas County Historical Society.
Okay, yeah.
They were put in about three, four years ago, and they're brownish.
And they're aluminum.
Aluminum, yes.
And they're aluminum. So I don't understand why they didn't provide that, this bid.
I don't know either. But Counselor Sweeney, you also had a question?
Yes, but, well, I was looking for value, at least I am, and price and quality equal value, and so when we don't accept the low bid, we always must, I think, my belief is, we have for the record why we picked a higher bid. So I assume that this verbiage would go in somewhat, and so in the future, someone will know why we didn't pick the low bid. I don't know if I have to ask that to be on the record, but I think it's important when we don't accept the low bid. Thank you.
Well, I think that's actually a good point to be brought up. Thank you for that. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? If not, then all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Item 8.1, Mayor Hagan is appointing Vicki Drake and Police Chief Leges to the Ad hoc Rental Inspection Study Committee.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve these, hopefully, last two named to the committee. All in favor of 8.1, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9.1, Counselor Sweeney is requesting updates on Kestrel and the landfill.
Counselor Bender, thank you. Just a very brief, and Counselor Sweeney, I think you kind of raise a good potential practice that probably we should be doing, maybe not only on Kestrel, but other projects that we've got going on, particularly when it comes to large dollars investment that the city is doing, and I will certainly try to work with the mayor on that. I guess just briefly, Jim Caesar's here, he's kind of the city's liaison with Kestrel as well as myself and with the mayor. I guess I want to assure the councilors that we're in pretty constant contact, either through Jim or the mayor's office or my office, with either Alan Klapmeyer or some of his staff regarding this. We did have some recent meetings here in the last couple of days to kind of get an update on not only where the plane is, which I think is what you got a pretty good update on a couple of weeks ago or a month ago from Steve Surfling, but also to kind of give you an update on some of the financing. And, you know, in talking with Alan, he's more than happy for me to say that the plane development is going quite well, which I think a lot of you know, the financing has been tough. There has been, and Alan is a little more animated than I'm going to be, but there's been some delays, which he's discussed in some of the financing, particularly upfront financing, not from the city and not from Douglas County and those types of things, but from other agencies that have kind of brought this project 10, 12, 13 months behind, particularly on the financing, which essentially down the road affects some of your equity investors, some of your private investment, and things of that nature that have gone. Now, on the bright side, they are engaged with probably, Jim, and correct me if I'm wrong, three or four groups right now on the private investment side. They continue to have meetings with these folks and are very, very, very confident that they are going to make this happen. It's a big project. You know, we're talking, you know, probably by the time to get this plane, excuse the pun, off the ground, we're talking $120 to $150 million. And it is a, it is a work in progress, and it is a very, very complicated project. But I think as some of the councilors have seen and some of we have seen, these folks are entrepreneurs. They're very, they're very passionate. Alan is probably one of the more passionate people that I've ever met when it comes to development, and quite frankly, I am very confident that they're not going to, they're not going to jump ship and walk away from us on this one. So continue to work with them. Just a couple of reminders, we have 60 people, 60 engineers working downtown in the post office. These folks are making $60,000 to $80,000. They're eating at Herbert's and Gerbert's, as was pointed out yesterday. They're shopping downtown, they're putting money back in the economy, and they're also building a very, very, very expensive plane. A lot of questions, I know councilors have asked me about, well, when are they going to start building, when are they going to start building Winter Street, when are they going to start building the airport? Right now, they are holding back on the Winter Street, one, because it's expensive. Two, they don't need it. The post office space has really worked out very well for them. The 15, 20 years ago, when Cirrus was being developed, it was more prototype-driven. This is more computer-driven. And yes, they're going to have to build a prototype soon, but they can do a lot of stuff graphically and work with the FAA that way. They have a meeting in December, kind of with their next updates with the FAA, and Steve Surfling in constant contact with FAA. Things are going very, very well on that. But they do need to get some more financing to go to that next step once they get there, and that essentially is driving the prototype. So I guess I'm open to questions. I think I can, I can speak for Alan in saying that if any of the councilors have any kind of questions or want to talk with Alan, or Ed, or Jim, you know, you can set it up through me, and I'd certainly be willing to bring you down there to take you through, get an update of what's going on from the horse's mouth, and be more than happy to do that. So I just, you know, Counselor Sweeney, again, I thank you, and I think it is a good practice for us to maybe update once every couple of months on what's going on in some projects. So if anybody has any questions, I'll certainly take that.
Counselor Sweeney, did you have a follow-up before Counselor McDonald?
Yeah, please. I just want, is the economy, the national economy or worldwide economy, is that playing a part in this at all?
I think there might be a little bit of that, and Jim can probably talk about. I think it's a lot of reluctance and investment, Jack, quite frankly. As you know, and I'm not going to badmouth banks, banks aren't loaning any money right now. It's tough to get investment from banks, and that's why they've kind of had to go outside that. The government and some of their backed, whether it be an SBA loan or any type of treasury, it's a tough road to hoe as well. So there is some economy pullback, I would agree.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald?
I would recommend any of the councilors go down and talk to Alan. Both Warren and I were there yesterday, and I think it was a very good update, and kind of knew most of it already, but it's good to hear it from him. And I think it's very positive, and I don't think he's going to jump ship either. But thank you for the update.
No, and I would agree. After I'm listening to him yesterday, and Jason, you did a very good summary of what we discussed yesterday, because I had down here a number of employees, computer design, and Winter Street. You covered them all, so I don't need to ask anything. Anyone else who would like to, Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, Jason, some of that funding that they're holding out there, that they're in need of, is any of that coming from the state? Or has the state kind of backed off on the original plans with some of their funding?
Well, there was some, and I'm going to be careful here, there was some, the state has come through on some of their loan programs, as well as there's some performance criteria that goes with tax credits. There were some, in a proposal letter that was kind of drafted at the beginning, kind of an agreement, there were some second and third, what we call tranches, or, lack of a better word, systems or cycles of new market tax credits that were going to be sought after by, and helped out with the state. Unfortunately, that has not happened, and we do continue to push them to do that. There has been a little bit of, a little bit of help by introducing us to other new market tax credit allocaties, but as of right now, they're kind of sitting a little bit dead in the water with the second and third phases of that.
Counselor Olson?
Allocaties?
[laughter]
That's what they're called. Wow. I think we all know that the state budget that was passed kind of stepped on any airplane development in the state of Wisconsin. I'll go ahead and say that. Where are we with W I D A? Do we still have their support for what they've done so far, and now it's pretty much private investment?
I would, I would say, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, I would say it's private investment. You know, from a city standpoint, you know, we try to continue to work very closely and encourage them to continue that, but I would say that I'm 90% sure that it's going to be private investment that's going to continue to work with this project.
Anyone else? Counselor McKenzie?
And Jason, you talked a little bit about the length of time that this is taking. It's, you know, longer than we expected, and you talked about investors. Has there been a loss of investors, or is there a chance that we might lose some potential investors?
Jim can correct me too here. I don't think there's been a loss of investors. I think it's been more of a, I shouldn't say a reluctance, but just a cautionary economy out there right now. People are asking a lot of questions of Alan that maybe five or six years ago wouldn't have. You know, the other thing that is running into is he's running into players that really have a lot of money and unfortunately aren't really looking to make any more, and so you really have to, quote, catch them on a good day. So he's been working through that, but I think these three or four that he's got are, you know, he's on his second and third and fourth meetings with these folks, and they keep coming back with questions. And the confident thing is, there is, they've not said no. So that is the key.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Jason.
Yep. Okay, anyone else? And since this is informational, we really don't need any action on this. Now, Counselor Sweeney, you had also had a question about the landfill?
Right. I'd just like to know what the, where we're going with that. We're running X amount of dollars in the hole, and there were some plans to do some varying things. I'd just like another update on that.
Yep, absolutely, Counselor. Just a few, I'll just throw out a few quick bullet points here on some, on some good news, I guess. First thing is cell five, the second phase that we've been building here in 2013 is near completion. The plastic liner's in, drainage material's been going in, and I think the expectation is that it'll be done by the end of the month here. It's on budget. We've had very few hiccups at all. It's gone very well. So that's our last containment cell. It's permanent for the site right now, and that's good news that way. As far as the budget for the landfill, overall for this year, you may remember, we were in the negative number with the budget that was set, but the good news is with the revenue that we've seen this year for some projects and some other things, that will actually make that thing turn out okay. We're going to be better than, to the good, on the budget this year by about $400,000, it sounds like. And the third thing I want to mention is the last meeting that the council did approve that contract with S A I C, which is the firm that was going to come in and do some further analysis of the landfill for us. They're going to do two things, or three things, really, excuse me. First thing will be to review our current operations and the cost of those operations for trash collection and for operating the landfill. They'll secondly take a look at a waste shed analysis, which is similar to like a watershed, how much, how much trash or revenue is available to our facility from the surrounding area that we're not looking at already that we might be able to tap into to raise revenues and try to support the landfill operation. And then the third thing they would do after that is to put a valuation on the landfill. If we decide to sell it, or if it should come down to that as being one of the viable options, we'd want to know what it's worth and how to market it. And those three phases are going to kick off here very shortly and probably will, I would think, conclude in, it could be March or April to May, somewhere in there, depending on how fast we can get data to them and get the analysis done.
Counselor Sweeney, did you have a follow-up?
Just for clarification for my own purpose, I don't quite understand the jargon, but I understand this. Will revenue exceed expenses for this year? Okay, thank you.
So if there are no other comments, again, oh.
I don't normally do this. I don't normally ask one of my colleagues a question, but I think it should be brought up, talking about the extra revenue for 2013, that it's an unusual revenue, and that it isn't one that's going to be with us year after year.
That's a great point, Gene. It's a one-timer. It's, and it's actually due to the project that the E S D is doing, dredging some of that material out of the C S T P facility down there, and some of the revenue that's been generated as part of that project is offsetting some of the cost of the landfill.
Counselor Dahlbeck?
I was just curious about the methane gas that it produces. Are we selling any of it or using any of it in any way? Is it just...
We are selling, we are actually burning the methane gas through the flare that's out there, and it turns it into carbon dioxide rather than the methane. And the reason I explain it that way is because the carbon dioxide is considered less harmful of the ozone layer, and because we make that conversion there by combusting it, we're able to sell the credits. Each ton of carbon dioxide we generate versus a ton of methane gets us about $5.25 on a carbon credit market that we've bought into. But as far as using the gas itself for operating cars or anything else, or heat source, we're not able to use it at the landfill right now, and the volume of gas is so much that we could never use it just at the landfill. It'd be, you'd need a half a city of houses or something like that to use that up. So we have been looking at projects for the past several years, and nothing has come to fruition where the cost benefit has worked out there to make it come together. So we're still continuing to look, and that would be a great idea, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Olson?
Jeff, do we get a timeline on any of this as to where we're going to be, whether we're going to sell it, whether we're going to lease it, whether we're going to continue to operate it? Because essentially, it's another item that we have to look for funding. Obviously, we can't implement a fee without lowering our tax levy. So what do we tell the public?
Yeah, we're looking to have that, and I think Gene mentioned this, maybe the last time we talked about the budgeting for 2015 will start early to mid-part of 2014, and we're trying to get some answers on this topic before that starts to happen. So the three phases that they've laid out here are going to go one after the other in sequence, but I think the first phase, we can cut some time off. Chris Bronson has got a lot of information put together about our facility right now, and I think we can trim some of the time out of that when we meet with these guys. But the anticipation was that we'd be done, I think, by the first of May or so at the latest, and we're hoping to make that sooner.
Can we trim part of the cost off, too?
Possibly. Yeah, I mean, we...
I mean, if we've got Chris doing some of the legwork.
Absolutely. I mean, it's hard to tell them when you're scoping this project exactly what we have in our, in our own hands as far as information of what they're looking for, but I have them write the contract so that we're being billed hourly up to that number you've approved, so that if we don't need that time, we shouldn't have to pay for it. So if we have things, we can, we can give them that'll save time. We should be able to make a savings.
So we approved $89,000, and then you're going to do it an hour by hour after that?
No, they would bill us up to that $89,000 by the hour that they actually spend, yeah. So what I'm saying is if they don't spend all of the hours that they projected, we'll save. we'll save.
Any other questions or comments as far as landfill? Okay, hearing none again. This needs no action since this was informational.
Item 9.2, Council President Bender and Vice President McDonough are appointing Counselor Dahlbeck to the following committees to replace Counselor Brown, the Deer Committee, the Human Resources Committee as an alternate, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Superior Public Museums Board.
Okay, so it's, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on 9.2? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Item 10.1 is a resolution introduced by Mayor Hagan declaring October 20th through 26th Freedom from Workplace Bullies Week.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for approval. Um, did you wish to read this? It's pretty short. Do you want me to read it? And, well, well Terry's digging for it and actually I have it here on the screen. When I went, I, I read today for a rolling reader rather than, um, yesterday since I was out of town. But when I got to the first classroom at a couple minutes before 9:00 AM this morning, they were all sitting on the floor along with the teacher too and the teacher was, was talking to them about bullying. And so this is, um, you know, it's not just the, the resolution here, but it's being done in all of the elementary, um, classrooms too. And there was a report that I believe was ABC News that I was watching before I came here. And that was about how, how bullying can have very, very dire consequences, including suicides and, and other things like that. So I really think when a resolution is brought before the council, it should be read. So I will read this. And it's a resolution introduced by Mayor Hagan declaring October 20th through 26th, 2013 Freedom from Workplace Bullies. And whereas the City of Superior has an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of its employees and citizens, and whereas that well-being depends upon the existence of healthy and productive employees working in safe and abuse-free environments, and whereas surveys and studies have documented the stress-related health consequences for individuals caused by exposure to abusive work environments, and whereas abusive work environments can create costly consequences for employees, including reduced productivity, absenteeism, turnover, employee health-related expenses, and if left unchecked, costly litigation. And whereas protection from abusive, abusive work environments should apply to every worker and not limited to legally protected class status based only on race, color, gender, national origin, age, or disability. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the City of Superior hereby proclaim October 20th through 26th Freedom from Workplace Bullies Week. And, um, passed, well, if everybody votes in favor of it, it will be passed and adopted this 15th day of October. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries.
Item 10.2 is a preliminary resolution introduced by the Public Works Department setting a public hearing November 5th declaring the intent to exercise special assessment powers under Wisconsin state statutes and top, and block tap the following alley, between 10th and 11th avenues east and east 3rd to east 4th streets.
It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no lights and no comments, all in favor of 10.2, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Can you read that?
Yes. Under business by public, this was something that was supposed to have been read at the beginning. And this is a proclamation by Mayor Bruce C. Hagan. Whereas in 1964, Congress passed a resolution allowing former President Lyndon Johnson to proclaim October 15th to be White Kane Safety Day. And this was, if you were listening to the radio, this was brought up a number of times on the radio news today. Whereas it is important that all Superior residents have the opportunity to live active, independent lives. And by supporting initiatives that promote safe mobility, we can help people who are blind or visually impaired to gain independence and realize their dreams. And whereas blind and severe, um, the visual impairment affect nearly 200,000 residents in Wisconsin. And whereas the white cane is an important tool for self-reliance and full participation and inclusion in our society, the use of white canes, dog, got, dog guides, and public and private transportation programs ensure that people who are blind or visually impaired can travel efficiently and safely, breaking down barriers to success and independence. And whereas the white cane or a guide dog are universal travel aids, recognize the symbols representing loss of vision. And whereas people who operate motor vehicles must be alert for visually impaired pedestrians. Now therefore, I, Bruce Hagan, Mayor of the City of Superior, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 15th, 2013 as White Kane Safety Day. And does that need, no, it's just a proclamation. So, so that, that needs nothing further. And just adding one, one thing, Mayor Ness, um, in, in support of White Kane Day, even in the rain, was going to walk two blocks blindfolded and I think I'm carrying a cane. So, a motion to adjourn the regular meeting would be in order.
What's to adjourn?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's reconvene in three, four. Too much wire. I was told to give a countdown. Now I've gotta find, get this back on.
You call it to order and I'll give it a start.
Just a second, I gotta find it. Here we go. There it is. Okay, I gotta go back to page one.
Roll call, we'll just note that everybody's present.
So we'll, um, start the, um, committee of the whole meeting at this time. Roll call is not necessary since it was already taken and everybody's still here. So we will start then with item number-
I have my-
Okay, I'll, I'll say that one more, one more time. We'll, we'll start the committee of the whole meeting. Roll call is not necessary since it's already been taken. And turn it over to the city clerk for some reading.
Item number one, with power to act, Public Works Director Getzmann has requested discussion on the railroad quiet zones in Superior. This was referred from the October 1st regular council meeting. Assistant Public Works Director Janico is requesting the council consider which, if any or all, of the 62 crossing locations should receive supplemental safety measures in order to establish new quiet zones and allocate the funding necessary in order to construct the improvements.
So Todd, did you want to speak on this?
I can. Um, what I was, I, I put together about a three-page introduction. This is a, and we've been, been talking about crossings and dealing with crossings for quite a while now. I tried to sum it up the best I could. Um, I hope, I hope it helped explain a few of the things that, that we're trying to do. But it's a, um, three pages doesn't explain it very well. You need a couple of, a couple of very thick books to give you a better idea. Um, so, but that's, that's a little bit of a background on it. The other thing I put out was a, a spreadsheet and I listed the crossings. And what I did is I organized them by daily train volumes. Um, so when I, when I said, um, I lost where it was, the number of horns that sound per day entering crossing, 575 times a day. So based on the number of crossings and the number of trains, that's 520, 575 long, long, short, longs from 15 to 20 seconds. Um, but by organizing them from, um, the highest train volume, that would be, um, you know, the, if, if you were looking for a place to start, it would be at the top with the highest volumes. Um, the other thing to consider is when we're looking at these is, um, if you, you know, the, the first one, the 28th Street Crossing, um, a half a block or a block away from that is the Corning Crossing, which according to the FRA DOT counts as 21 trains a day. So by doing those two crossings, that's 42 trains a day. Now, how accurate their crossing numbers are, the number of trains per day, I, I don't know. Um, I haven't counted any on any particular day, but those are, these are counts that the railroad provide to, um, the FRA and the DOT. So, um, I, what, what we're looking for is, uh, I guess that, that's the question, looking for some kind of a direction. Um, we've got a lot of crossings. Um, it's an astronomical, astronomical number down at the, the bottom of the page to close all the crossings and to go through that process. And I imagine, um, I don't know that we would be able to do it in five years with the railroads and, and the type of coordination that it takes with them. Um, we've already got an estimate for the 28th Street Crossing at about $460,000. Um, in order to do that crossing, we would have to get a new estimate because the estimate that we had is expired. Um, that may take a month or two. And they may do it in a week, but probably a month or two. And then we would, um, approve that estimate and they would go forward and, and what I've been told is it takes up, up to about a year, um, for them to process that, to do their design work, to put the, get the bungalow in, all that kind of stuff. So, um, what, what we're looking for is, is some direction. Um, we've been in kind of a, um, for lack of a better term, a swirling pattern, which are, are we gonna do some? Are we gonna do all? Are we gonna do none? Um, but we need to start moving in a direction. Um, and what happened recently with 28th Street is, is that one went from a, from a pre-rule quiet zone, zone, it expired due to, uh, due to an accident in about 2009 or 2010. On June 24th, they started sounding their horns. We were denied a waiver by the FRA. We did get a waiver for the constant warning timing, um, which it won't be required at that crossing, which reduces the cost from about a million, million one, million two, somewhere in that range, down to 460,000. Um, so that's kind of where we sit. But again, we need to, you know, we need to do something with this, you know, to either move forward or not move forward or, um, you know, there's, I've been, been working with, uh, Jeff from Senator Jeff's office. Um, I haven't spoke with anybody at Millroy's office, but then the, the two, um, Tammy Baldwin's office and Sean Duffy's office, I spoke with people from them. And the, uh, there's really not a lot they can do because it's at a federal level. Um, and what I've, what I've encouraged them and, and talking with them is if there's a loophole somewhere, if there's basically a money tree, if there's a money tree somewhere to make these improvements that you know of that we can qualify for, let me know and we'll do everything we can to start there, um, to get into that process. But, um, that's, that's kind of where we sit. We, we've either, we either have to do something or, or not do something. But I think we need to make a decision on it one way or another. Um, because it's a, you know, a lot, and then I know it's an important issue, so don't, don't make me, I don't want it to sound like that, but it's, it also takes a lot of time. Um, we've got a consultant that we've been working with, SRF Consulting. Um, and they are, um, probably in the Midwest, one of the, one of the, the, the better firms as far as doing, doing this type of work. Created quiet zones all over in, um, Wisconsin, North, uh, North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, Illinois, and Wisconsin. That's kind of their area. They're the experts. Um, we've been working with them and, um, you know, again, it's, it's a, it's just something we need to, you know, decide if we're gonna do something. And if we are gonna do something, let's, uh, let's get going.
Say, say Todd, if I, if I could clarify, by the money tree, you mean grants?
Grants or, or, or appropriations or, you know, they're, the catch 22 is that, um, for example, the 28th Street Crossing-
Which many of us hear on a nightly basis-
Is, does not, is not dangerous enough to qualify for safety funding, but is dangerous enough without the horns that they have to sound the horns. So it's in the, if it were more dangerous, it would qualify for safety funding. So if there were four more accidents there, then it may qualify for something through the OCR. Um, until it gets to that risk index, then it currently doesn't qualify. So we're in that, we're in that middle ground, which is where all of our crossings are actually. Um, we do have some pre-rule quiet zones. We've got eight, we've got the A Street, uh, A Street corridor, North End. Um, that's been a lot of OCR work with the DOT. Um, in addition, we've had, uh, there's like 17 other locations that are still pre-rule- In addition, we've had, there's like 17 other locations that are still pre-rule quiet zones.
And Todd, can you explain what pre-rule quiet zone means?
Pre-rule means, the, the best way I can explain it is when they came up with the, the Trainhorn Law in, in 2005, I believe that's when it, deadline, 2003. Final rule published April 27, 2005. So in 2005, the final rule was published and it says that at a, at a crossing, you have to have lights, you have to have gates, and you have to have some other type of, of restriction, such as a median. If you have a median, you can have two quadrant grates, have a median, two quadrant gates have a median so the cars can't go out around the gate, or you do a four quadrant grate, gate. Well, a median's a lot cheaper than the four quadrant grate, gate. So that's, these are the things you need to have in, in order for a train to not blow its horn going through that crossing. However, as part of the rule, and this was part that the municipalities and counties and states got involved with in the federal level, is they wanted to be able to make a pre-rule quiet zone. So if there was active, not passive, warning devices at a crossing, such as, such as lights, such as lights and bells, if there's already, already a signal alarm there, even, even if there wasn't constant warning timing, didn't have all of those things, it would still qualify as a pre-rule quiet zone where the horns would not blow. And that's based on if the city had an ordinance in place, which we did in 1971 ordinance, and what the current practice was of the railroad. So those, those things combined would make it a pre-rule quiet zone. Now, the pre-rule had to, had to be under, there's a risk index for each crossing. So if there's an accident at a crossing, that raises the risk index of that crossing. There's a national risk index which takes into account every crossing in the United States. So what the average is, that crossing has, the, the risk index for that individual crossing has to stay below the national average in order for it to be a pre-rule quiet zone. So once there's an accident, such as 2009, I think at 28th Street, now that crossing is above the national average, we're required to make the improvements or it's no longer, because it no longer qualifies as a pre-rule quiet zone. They give us a window of time to do it, and we don't do it in that window of time, the horns sound.
And so, just to ask a question or to clarify, the median between eighth, the, the new median between eighth and ninth on Hammond, that's so that the gates can be smaller and you still can't, not that anybody's ever done that, but you can't drive through like that?
Correct. The, the interconnect with, with the signal lights, that was a 90, 90% paid for by the state of Wisconsin OCR with safety money. Because of the configuration of the lights at Broadway, it, it seemed to all work out pretty well with the, with the tower project. But we paid 10, we paid the design on that. The medians are required, they're actually shorter than what's required, but we've got a waiver, they should have been all the way to the, the, to Winter Street and to A Street on the other side. But we, we, we had them accept it a lot, a lot shorter to make it, to make it easier for the businesses right around there and the trucks and stuff to, to move around. So they accepted that, but yes, that, in order to be a quiet zone, that is a requirement unless it qualifies pre-rule.
We do have one person signed up to speak from the public. Counselor Olson, should we, would you like to speak first or should we have the?
No, it's fine with me, I'll...
So George, did you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Come, come and speak? I didn't try your last name. Okay.
Todd? Thank you for all the good information that you put together. I know it took some time. Jeff, hello, thank you. It's just that this whole thing has been kicked down the road since 71, okay? I mean, that's over 40 years. I mean, things, things normally get done faster than that. And looking at the 28th Street Crossing, you already got one gate that's going up and down. It's like the job got half done. One thing that I don't understand is this TW, TW or CWT, it's a circuitry that's, that's supposed to go into this railroad crossing thing. Now why is that so expensive? Can you explain that to me?
At that location, it's... At that particular location on 28th Street, it's because there's so many tracks that go out. Each, each set of tracks has to have the circuitry attached to it and read back to the crossing. So I mean, you've got to go out a certain distance, I think from...
Like 1,200 feet, I think?
Yeah, it's something, it's crazy. I mean, I don't know the, all the ins and outs of the design, but I know we met the railroad folks out there and kind of stepped through what it would have to involve and what it would look like. It was, it was fairly complicated.
Well, considering that this is their, their yard, their shop, whatever you want to call it, it's mostly used by railroad personnel to conduct business there. So considering that you got a lot of the stuff covered through grants and things like that over on your other area with, with the medium and stuff like that, it, it's probably going to cost you more money over here, but you, you saved on the other end. So if you averaged the two, you'd come out fairly well on both crossings.
I, I just wanted to point out that the, the constant warning timing, that was one of two, two waivers that we filed with the FRA. One was for the extension of the, of the pre-rule. And the second one was for the elimination of constant warning timing. The FRA looked at that and said, because it is a yard with, you know, an infinite number of tracks almost, you know, while they all come together there and having to go up 1,200 feet, that the cost and the, the cost of the constant warning timing and the speed of the trains, they waived that. So with constant warning timing, 28th Street would be, the one we're talking about would be 1.1, 1.2 million. We've had that eliminated and that's where we're at, 460,000.
Which is a bargain.
Apparently.
Apparently, you know, since you're throwing these numbers out here. So, but you know, I don't know, I, it, something has to be done. I mean, I was sitting in the dollar store, my wife took me in there, and I could actually hear the train through a concrete wall that's been backfilled with concrete. You could still hear it while you were shopping. I was surprised. I was absolutely surprised. And I know there's that old folks home that's right down the street. You know, what did they do? Take away their hearing aids at about six o'clock so they're able to sleep? I mean, I mean, you know, I came over here to Superior because it's such a beautiful area. And I think that the city council does a wonderful job managing this town. And, but for something this, like this to slip off their plate, it seems like it's been put back on the plate, but it needs to be dealt with. It really does. I mean, for the quality of life of people over in Billings Park, my tenants, the people in the assisted living home and stuff like that, they, they, they need it. You know, we all need it. And, you know, you want to bring new industry and everything like that in it, they're not going to go over to Billings Park and put a, put a 200 or a $300,000 home over there and listen to that train going all night long. I mean, I mean, that isn't the way my perception of the neighborhood was when I first bought into it over there. So I hope you consider a few things that I said here in your decision in dealing with this. I think you guys are doing a great job or a great follow-up because I did give you 60 days to come up with something. And you finally did. The question is, is, is everyone going to follow along with your suggestions?
Right. And, and it, you know, the 68 thing is, you know, this is the only way I could think to do is just put it all out there. This is what it is, this is what it looks like. You know, we, we can start somewhere and continue to work through it or...
Okay, your protege over there, Jeff, he's with Public Works, right?
Yep.
Okay. What would be the problem with having Public Works do some of these crossings and stuff like that to keep the cost down?
We're not allowed.
You're not allowed?
Yeah, we can't do it.
Is it, it's a special animal or what?
The railroad. BNSF, 28th Street, for example, is BNSF. We get a quote from them of what it's going to cost them to make that crossing improvement. Now, whether they pad the numbers, whether they give us the, the bare bones price, we have nothing to say about it. They have an engineering cost figured in there. The gates, the circuitry, the bungalows, all of those things figured in. And they say, we estimate it's going to cost you $460,000. We'll put up, we'll do the improvements, we'll do the work, but you write us a check. That's, that, and you know, we have to sign an agreement with them and that's...
Do you think they're being a good neighbor to everybody there by telling you to write me, write me a check for almost a quarter of a, or a half a million dollars? I mean...
Unfortunately, that's the process, so as we know, it's, I mean, that's, we have no other...
Has anyone asked them to kick in on it at all or?
Oh yeah. Oh yeah. Good luck. They, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, and I, I believe I sent you that information, they wouldn't sign...
Yeah, I got it right here.
Sign a waiver or agree with a waiver that would give us another year of quiet zone there.
So basically, they just told you to talk to the hand, huh?
That's a nice way of putting it, yeah.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll see what plays out after this and look forward to talking to you guys again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, George, for your comments. Counselor Olson?
Couple of questions and maybe a comment too as to the 28th Street Yard. Anybody that's been here for a long time, if you remember, the Roundhouse used to be down on Belknap. And that housed all of the units, engines per se. And they did all their switching down at that end of town at the time. So part of the problem has been the progress that, in, in the success of BNSF Railroad, that they expanded out to 28th Street. They put their office there, they got the Jim Dan Hill statue facing the wrong way because that was some guy out in North Dakota and they got it facing Anger Tower. But anyway, my point is, is that some of those things are out of our control as to what the railroad has done. On the other hand, we're at their beck and call as to how to make things better for us. So, couple of questions. First of all, are, are we prioritizing these things that, I mean, are we looking at 28th Street as the, the place to start this at?
I haven't prioritized that way. That's not something I think I would dare touch with a 10-foot pole, deciding which one we were going to work on first. I'm, I would, I would leave that up to, between Mayor Hagan and the 10 councilors to decide. I can make recommendations and based on volume of trains per day and, and the area and the, and the recent change, you know, I would say that the, the 28th Street Crossing and the Corning Crossing, those two together would, would do something significant. The Corning, I think, is the fourth one down. And then the next two, you know, in order to, in order to complete a quiet zone would be the, the 258th Street between Albany and, and Butler there.
Okay.
Because you're, you're quiet on Central already, but then once you get further down, then you've got a multi, multitude of crosses, so...
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but the, on your graph here, if we're looking at daily train volumes at 22 on North 28th Street, for a comparative estimate of $460,000, can you explain to me when you go almost all the way down to the sheet and you've got one for $458,000, a comparative with zero train traffic?
That's, the, the cost of, just, the, the, the estimate is the cost to make that a quiet zone. So that's, it's based on whether it requires constant warning timing, the number of tracks that go through there, and the lights and gates cost. I got a, a bit of a formula from our consultant about if you've got this many tracks, it's, it's going to be this. This is about the cost of doing those and I kind of massaged it into, into something comparable to give, to give you a rough estimate. I'm not, I'm not saying that when you've got a crossing that says there's zero trains a day that we should go out and spend $300,000, $400,000 on each of them to make sure they have lights and gates and all the safety measures. Because if a train happens to go through there, they're going to blow their horn. I wouldn't recommend that.
Well, I wouldn't either, but...
But it's just the cost, the cost to make those improvements because they're active crossings. These, these are all of our active crossings within the city.
Okay, then, for our sake, I mean, if you look at all of them, you're looking at $19 million, we don't have that. Plain and simple, that's gone. What is, now I'm going to put you on the spot. What is a comfortable level? And, you know, we could take and I could say, the most important thing to me is the crossing out on 58th Street between Butler and Albany. Denise, you've got railroad tracks in yours. Tommy, you've got it out in I task. Esther, you've got it down by you. Mick's been awake for two and a half years. Mike Herrick has the same thing. So in the, in the overall scheme, you say we want to get going with this. The end result is we don't have money to do this. So in the gentleman's, you know, you, you've come back with a solution somewhat, but not an answer. Where do we, where do we fit in as councilors or you as department heads or Gene in the finance department? You know, we're going to go say, hey, Gene, go find this money and she's going to, you know...
Poor girl.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't have a good answer for you and that's why it's been, that's why it's been presented this way. If I say that, that the most important crossing is the 28th Street Crossing, then you, Dan, you've got how many crossings out there? Denise, you've got crossings, Esther, you've got crossings up in North, there's, there's crossings all over the place. I, I've been tiptoeing around this one pretty gently for a while because I believe, believe it's up to you. Now, if you look at me for a recommendation, I'm going to use the, I'm going to use the daily train volumes.
Right.
That's, that's what we should be, that's what we should be looking at.
And that's why I made my prior, prior, you know, prioritizing. One other, one other question and then I'm done. The pre-rule requirement, or whatever you called it, there's 17 of them? Is that what you said, something like that?
There, there was 18, there's currently 17 still in place in the city. We've, we've recently, we just filed a bunch of paperwork with the FRA, notice of continuation. We have to keep filing paperwork in order to keep them quiet.
That's my question. Do we, do they expire and we are on top of that?
We're on top of it. That's, that's our consultant that's helping us with that.
So Finance Director Vito, please say that you're going to be able to write a check for this.
I can if you want to give up something else.
No, but I saw your light on, so...
I, I wanted to just talk finances a little and, and give you some parameters of what I think you have to work with. And really, I think this simply boils down to, is this a priority of the council? And what you have to do, I mean, there are issues that come up on a daily, on a weekly, on a monthly basis that are outside of, for example, our, our budget or our capital improvement program that we already have passed. So what you need to do is you need to consider where does this issue fit in with all of the other things that are already approved within the capital improvement program? And then you need to make a couple of decisions. Either it doesn't rise to the top compared to whatever else is within that program, or it kicks something else out because you do find it a priority. So then, taking it one step further, if you, you could take it two ways. You could say, we're going to leave the level of our CIP, the same amount of spending, and something on the bottom of the priority list is going to come out. And it could be the cost equivalent of one quiet area, two quiet areas, five quiet areas. Or you have an option of issuing debt to cover this, but that's a decision that the council needs to be aware of because we obviously have to pay back that debt through the levy. We're already looking at issuing $4 million, really any time now, through the CIP that was just adopted by the council, probably within the last month. So this, those are the parameters and it's really simply prioritizing where it falls in with the rest of the projects that we've got going on.
Very good explanation. Counselor Dahlbeck?
I just wanted to say, I sat here eight and a half years ago and did the same thing, cried about the noise. And eight and a half years later, it's still noisy, so...
And I'll remind you of five and a half, well, no, it was about four, four and a half years ago when we had George Warren here from, on BNSF from, from Texas and the representative from the FRA here. And basically what they said was, too long and too short.
That's right. And he said, live with it. That's what they told us. And we have been living with it.
Yep. So Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, I, I know what you mean, Gene, when you talk about prioritizing. I, I think if you talk to just about any, anybody that's affected by these horns and there's, and they're all over. I mean, I've got them in my district in particular, it's bad because of the 28th Street. But I think anybody who was affected by this would tell you that this is a, that this is a priority for them. I think George Cherkowski, thanks for coming tonight. I think he's a prime example of, of someone that, you know, has invested in this city. He not only lived... He not only lives a block from the 28th Street Yard, but he also has many, many tenants that live there. And these people want to move out of his apartments because they can't stand it. They're a block away. They're blowing those horns. I left, I left my house tonight and they were blown. I think they were trying to play the song Smoke on the Water or something like that with train horns. And it wasn't, it wasn't fun to listen to. And so I think that the priority, I think, for all of the people is that we need to do something about it. Again, I don't know what that answer is. Todd, you've worked with me, you know. Well, maybe, maybe it's been, you've shared the frustration of what we can't do. But something has to be done because I know a lot of people that are talking about, about moving out of town. Not just, not just moving from where they're at. Like I say, George is right next to the, to the, to the tracks. I don't know how he does it. I'm about a half a mile and there's times where, when they're blowing those horns with all your windows closed, it sounds like they're right inside the house. And it's terrible and you can't sleep. And yeah, I haven't slept in two years. But it's, it's a big, big problem and people are going to be moving out. We're going to be losing that, you know, that money from people who own these homes. And if it's anything like what George, the problem that George has is that, yeah, these, you know, tenants are moving out and, you know, well, we'll get new tenants. The word is out there that don't move there because it's too loud. So he has, he has a dilemma there, so. That's all I can say is that it is, it is a priority for the people. It is a priority, I think, of this council, but maybe not as much, anybody on the council, maybe not as much as me. But I think, I know Esther, like she says, she's, she struggled with this. I think she brought this to our attention, you know, long before. And, you know, going down in the North End, the corridor, you know, there's a lot of crossings there that create a situation where it's, it can be constant, right? You know, constant during the night or during the evening, so. But anyways, Todd, I appreciate, like George said, you know, all the work that you've done on this and the meetings that you've been to and the conversations and the emails and, and the meetings that we were at and meetings that got canceled because people couldn't show up. But thanks a lot and, but it's very frustrating.
Counsel Sweeney and then Counsel Herrick.
Someone took my thunder. I agree that it's got to be a priority. We've got to prioritize things in where this is. But noise is a limitless phenomenon. We'll never come to an end on it. Because it will be priority one, priority two, and then it'll go from the railroad to truck traffic. On East Second Street, very noisy. People complain to me about noise traffic. So there is no limit to, to noise. And so, for me, this project, and I don't live, I live next to a train and I hear them and I hear sirens at night. And so, very, it's noise, okay? It isn't a railroad. It's noise. So this would not reach a high priority for me. I'll just put that on the table right now. Thank you.
Okay, and then Counsel Herrick, you're next.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, an occasional train horn now and then is a bad, but when they're constantly, you know, I push those buttons. I've had people call me about two weeks ago saying that they literally go down and watch those people down on the tracks purposely pressing buttons so that they can sound off the horn. I, I've been getting calls to people saying they're going to move out of their homes. And again, you know, there goes the tax base for the city. There goes dollars that will help fund the city because of the noise. So it is a major problem. It is something that we, we do have to deal with. And again, how it costs, again, that's, that is a big problem, but we do have to deal with it.
And I would just make a follow-up on that. I got a call recently from a constituent who was, who was calling to talk about the Emerald Ash Borer. You know how he started the conversation? What are we going to do about those train horns? And I said, it'll be brought up at the council meeting on October 15th. But, you know, what can be done? I just did some math and again, I have to clarify this by saying I did get a D minus in advanced algebra. But just doing some math, if we were to take just the first five that Todd had mentioned on here and approximate numbers, that'd be 1.4 million. 10,000 taxpayer, or 10,000 properties that pay taxes. So you divide that and come out to about 145 per property on that. And I don't know, would, would people be, would people be happy with, you know, adding, adding that much onto the tax rolls? And also, now, would that have to be, would that have to be all paid off in a year? So, you know, if you, if you made it over five years, then we're looking at, what would you say, like $30 a year that would have to be added on those taxes. But the negative of that is, we're looking at South Superior and we're looking at 28th Street. And it doesn't take care of Central Park. It doesn't take care of the North End. And it doesn't take care of any, any place else, so. We looked to Todd for a solution and Counsel, Counsel Dolbeck, did you, did you want to add something?
I was just going to say I have three highrises, senior highrises in my district.
Yes, I know you do.
You know, so. Tax them? I don't think so.
No, no. And Todd and then Counsel Finland.
We came prepared. If we, if we were to, if we were to say, say North 28th Street, 460 round numbers, call it a half a million. If we were to bond for that over 10 years, it would be 0.48 percent, like $3.36 per year on a $100,000 home. So it'd be another, like 3.6 cents per thousand every year for 10 years, you know, for that one. Add another one, doubles, add another one, you know, for every, for every half a million. In order to bond, in order to bond for that, or it would have to be reprioritized and something would have to fall out of the CIP.
So if you were to throw out the ones that are lower than 10 trains per day and just take, take the top ones, did you have, and again, without a calculator, and I have one on my phone, but it's more trouble than it's worth. You know, what would that be?
Just, just based on the number of crossings, eight million, something like that. And, you know, what I would look for is, is if we're going to start a program and if we have, if we have a priority list, let's do it. Let's say we're going to, you know, let's make a motion that we're going to do one this year or two this year and two next year. Make it some, make it some sort of a priority so we can put it together. Mickey had mentioned before that it should have been something that we should have been socking, socking away a little bit every year and nicking away at it. Fantastic idea. Hindsight, but, you know, here, here we are. So that's, that's what we're, that's what I'm looking for is some type of a, some type of a conclusion. Let's, let's move forward. Let's, let's do something with it.
Well, let's let Counsel Finland speak and then Gene has her light on.
I'm just curious about your idea of prioritizing by strictly by number. When you look at some of the crossings there, Corning Avenue, down in the middle of the switchyard, I don't see how you can justify lights and gates for one house or two houses in a location like that. Isn't there some way we can justify by traffic on the streets or something like that? You know, there, this, there can't be more than two or three cars crossing that, that railroad crossing in, in a day. And yet they're blowing a whistle every time a train goes by and there's, what, 20, 21 trains a day go by there? It's kind of ridiculous with some of these crossings that we have. Fiber, Fiber Street down there by the cement plant, it's kind of highly, there are a lot of crossings there, but there's certainly not a lot of, maybe there's heavy truck traffic going down there. I don't know what Manji's got going down at the fireboard plant, but. I think we have to look at it more than just strictly the number of, you know, trains going by and who's, who's being affected by this blowing the whistle, why they have to even blow a whistle for Corning Avenue.
Well, I don't work for the railroad, even though at one time that I did, as did Counsel McKenzie. But talking to engineers, they say their hands are tied.
Their hands are tied. They have to do it. They have to do it.
And Counsel Dolbeck, did you want to?
I was just going to say, what about closing some crossings? Are there some on that list that could be closed? You know, that would be a, a solution to some of it.
To some of it. We started off, and I actually brought it with me, we had five sites that we looked at with, with BNSF. And I think our total number, if we closed, actually six of them, if we closed six crossings, we'd, we'd receive 155,000 from the railroad. That does two things. That puts money towards closing crossings and also that's one crossing that they're not going to blow at. 28th Street, I don't believe is an option. I mean, we can't close that one and route them around anywhere. Police and fire protection are dependent on that route. When we start looking in North End, we had talked about closing the Tower Avenue and the John Avenue, two of them, and that way you've got, you've got access. But when you start talking about the trucking companies and stuff, we could get, we could get some of them so we could reduce the number in that way. But there's still, you know, with, with that, with that list of, I think it's probably 12 or 13 crossings down there. You know, we're looking at a couple, a couple, three million bucks, even if we close some crossings, to make that whole thing a quiet zone. Yeah, down by Third Street. So, so we could do some of that. And there's no requirement that we make the whole thing a quiet zone if we just decide to close the crossings. And then that's money in our pocket to spend somewhere else. We've, we've done that legwork already. But, but it's, again, the rest of it is the whole quiet zone. So if there's, you know, we had looked at some crossings, Sixth Street and Seventh Street out on between 24th and 26th. If we've, if we got rid of one of, one of two of those crossings, that would reduce the, the, the noise there. Fourth Street, we didn't want to mess with because you've got the fire hall between Fourth and Fifth and you want both, both routes out of there. So there, you would have to have lights and gates at that one. Fifth Street is, is a quiet zone. I believe that's pre-rule. So, so any combination thereof, we've still got to get traffic through there, but we've, you know, that limiting factor and we've been, been looking at some of those. There's not a lot of low-hanging fruit out there yet. I mean, you'll, you'll go through East End, you'll see that there's a lot of crossings closed. When you talk about taking, closing a road and taking away somebody's access, they're quite upset about it. So you've, it's, it's a balancing act. But I, I'll, I'll run with any, any recommendation to, to look at any of this stuff.
Finance Director Vito has had her light on and wants to say something.
If I could make a suggestion, it would be asking that you bring this back, whether it's the first meeting in November or another committee of the whole. Because it sounds like you have a couple areas that need prioritizing. First, you need to prioritize if this is going to get inserted into the CIP. And I'm seeing people or councilors that I think would be in favor of that. And I'm seeing councilors that I think would not be in favor of that. So I think that's the big decision you need to make first. But then you've also got prioritizing within that quiet zone program if it is approved. So it seems to me like there's a lot of work that's still, or a lot of decisions that still need to be made. And I, I wouldn't really want you to consider this being the size of the issue that it is financially, completely outside of our capital improvement program because that does nothing as far as the, the goal of prioritizing where this would fit in.
Does somebody have a motion to that effect? Oh, oh, Counsel Massolio, did you want to ask a question first?
Yeah, Todd was mentioning something about, about the stoplights on Winter or Broadway or whatever, having some effect to the crossing there. Couldn't the city put up stop and go lights on some of these, no, flashing lights? No?
We're, we're not allowed to have any involvement in it at all, other than writing the check. Right, right. The, the stoplights, the, the lights at Winter Street, on, on Winter Street at Tower and on Hammond, on Winter Street, they're, it's interconnected with the rails. So the stoplights are going to function, constant warning timing on the track. They're going to say a train is coming. Lights are going to function to make sure that there's no traffic on the tracks. And that's, that's a safer, according to the OCR, that's a safer way to go than having the lights a block away. So with that all being interconnected, we're paying for the traffic lights. OCR is paying for the new, the new gates, the interconnect, all that type of stuff on, on the, on the Hammond Crossing. Putting, putting up lights, that kind of stuff, great idea. But without that interconnect, without that, without the, the communication with the train, we can't do it.
No, what I'm talking about is say, I'm, I'm thinking about 58th Street where the, you come up to the tracks and you're kind of going up and you're going down again. If the city established a stop light before that and one on the other side of that, wouldn't that, couldn't that be like a safety for the railroad? I mean, if you have to stop 100 feet before the tracks, that, that wouldn't.
Even, even if, even if it was a stop sign right at the tracks where you're required to stop and you have it say, look both ways. The, the federal regulation says that in order for a train to not sound its horn, you have to have active warning, which is lights and gates, constant warning timing. And, you know, either the four quadrant gates, gates or the two quadrant gates and, and alternate measures. That, that's a federal, federal law, so we, we really have no control over it.
Okay. Does anyone wish to make a motion of some, in some way, shape or form? Counsel Olson?
I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the November, whatever the date is, committee of the whole meeting for further discussion.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to move this to the, the next committee of the whole meeting, which would be November 19th. And if there's no discussion on that, all in favor say aye. Oh.
Would you be willing to give me a little something of what you wanted me to come back with? Kind of like a windsock here, how?
I can, I can come back with our current CIP and some scenarios of if you did one, two, three, four zones. All the options that I talked about, whether it would be issuing debt or taking a different project out. I'll bring that back.
And how about, how about I do something to the effect of take the, you know, in the, in the list, anything with, say, 10 and above in a, in a five-year plan to create, five-year plan, 10-year plan, two-year plan? Five-year? I'll do five. A five-year plan to, you know, and what something like that would look like, you know, based on those priorities, based on the, the daily train volumes.
I think that sounds good. Yeah, so, so it, with, with the two provisos that have been added by Finance Director Vito and Assistant Public Works Director Janico, all in favor say aye? Those both same sign? Motion carries. So, number two.
Item number two, with power to act, City Forester Mary Morgan and Assistant Public Works Director Janico presented scenarios to the Emerald Ash Borer infestation. It was referred from the October 1st council meeting. City Forester Morgan is recommending the council formally choose response number two, take and replace 2014 through 2020 at a cost of $70,000.
What's the pleasure of the?
Motion to approve.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Discussion on this matter? Counsel, Counsel Olson? So, I, I would have one, one question. And what about the option A underneath this?
Yes, thank you. Right now, we have somewhere in the range of 20 or $25,000 in our non-lapsing tree fund. And that fund is infused with a sum of five grand a year. And so, it has that money in it, so you have some dollars that don't have to be carved away from anything else to either realoc, to allocate to additional tree planting or to treating some specimen corridors if you wish. Now, the 70 grand that has been identified as the cost of response two, we really only have 35 grand of that with that infusion of tree money. So while it might be 70 grand, over six years, we, we don't have it all. We only have half of it. So, option A is you might want to take those dollars and experiment and treat some of your specimen corridors, which means you're short on your 70 grand. Option B is you use that to beef up, up to the 70 grand so that we can actually replace 1,400 as we take the 3,000. Is that clear or confusing? Clear is mine.
Counsel Herrick?
Yeah, just, just for clarification, take and replace, basically, removing the, the diseased trees and replacing them with no prolonging of the lives of, of, of any other trees, correct?
That's correct, Herrick, Counsel Herrick. And not only that, That's correct, Herrick, Counselor Herrick, and not only that, we're suggesting that we not simply take diseased trees, we want to take all the ash. That means we'll be taking healthy trees alongside diseased trees in each neighborhood.
Okay, and you figure that total project, 70,000?
70,000 will replace 1,400 of the 3,000 trees we take.
Okay. And then also to, I, I favor option B.
I do, true.
Counselor Dahlbeck?
I have a question. What are we going to do with homeowners? How are we gonna make them remove the trees? If we can't get them to remove their trees, then we're in trouble here.
Well, our ordinance counselor allows us to send a notice to correct the homeowners if any hazard tree they have in their yard is a detriment to the public. So we'll have to be assessing that along the way.
Well, how are you gonna just, are you gonna determine if they're infected, or if they're not infected? I mean, are you just gonna tell them you've got ash that are in your yard?
No, I think in the case of the private residential ash trees, we would wait until the ash is a hazard to the public.
All right, that makes it clear.
Yeah, yeah. The, the motion doesn't identify a preference for option A or B in this moment?
As, as of now, no, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Olson?
With the, the motion, or the, the discussion that we've had in take and replace, I think it makes, it only makes sense to go with option B, because if we're, if we're talking about taking and replacing, I don't think we should be in the business of doing experiments. So my recommendation would be to go with option B, such as Herrick back there suggested.
So that's a clarification of your original motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and who had the original second?
Thank you, Olson.
Who had the original second? Counselor Finland?
Yeah.
And you're comfortable with option B? Okay. So is there any other comment? No? Okay, so.
I have some.
Oh, Counselor Sweeney, I'm sorry, I cannot, because August had, I can't see your, your light.
Before we vote, I'd just like the read, the motion.
Okay.
Well, the motion is from Counselor Olson, seconded by Finland, to approve the recommendation by City Forester Morgan to formally choose response two, take and replace, and also to approve option B, to use the funds from the non-lapsing tree fund to supplement the tree planting budget.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as just read, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Item number three, with power to act, Counselor Olson, Counselors Olson and Bender are requesting, recommending the mayor be a standing member of all labor management meetings.
What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Counselor Sweeney?
Is this for all mayors continuing on, or is this strictly for the current mayor?
I would think this would be setting precedent. Okay, Counselor Olson?
The intent of it would be, unless we change the description of the mayor as the chief executive officer, we haven't listed Bruce Hagan, Jack, so I would, I would, my intent is that moving forward.
Be a.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So any other discussion after hearing that clarification? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign? Motion carries? Look, I was just gonna say, I'm looking for another motion, okay? And was there a second on that motion? Okay, Venacey? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Long meeting, putting in for overtime.